Oh my goodness. Need wheels.
I didn't bring the hat. I'll have to come tomorrow. I wasn't thinking. I didn't bring the hat. I probably just... Herself was just...
What does it say? Is that what they...
That's... that's what it says.
Well, that makes sense. Yeah, yeah. So they're gonna have dinner after?
Yeah, 'cause I remember you. I remember seeing that invitation, but I knew it was during our meeting. I don't know. I mean, there's one step on and nothing is really made.
Good luck.
Yeah. Good luck.
They weren't liking you. They were talking to each other.
We're just gonna start a little bit late because we understand that citizens are coming in and we don't want to start the meeting without everyone being in the room. Ms. Chelsea. How many, how many more? How many more, Ms. Chelsea? We, we probably have about fifty more. Chris. Oh, mask. Did Jason give Mr. Call? Okay, we'll give it a couple more minutes and then we'll... Oh goodness.
All right, I think we have... Mayor, we have just a few more, so I think you can go ahead and start.
All right. Start at six-ten, six-oh-nine. That's it, Chelsea? Okay.
We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, April the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. We will have our invocation will be done by the Associate Pastor Andrew Dickens, First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville. After that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Is Pastor Dickens here? Oh, there you are. Please stand for the invocation.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this new day, for the spring season with the new life, the flowers, the birdsong that we hear and see around us. We thank you for these common graces, a reminder of your goodness and faithfulness. We thank you for the opportunity to gather today for health and strength, the ability to gauge and meaningful work on behalf of the City of Douglasville. We thank you for each and every person that makes up our community. We pray for the council meeting this evening, for Mayor Robinson and the counselors who work with her. We remember the various departments that serve our community and the staff members who labor diligently on our behalf. Help them, guide them, and strengthen them for the work that they do. We thank you for the rich diversity of individuals, groups, businesses, charities, and faith-based organizations that make up our city. Help us recognize the value and the role that we all play in making Douglasville a great place to live and learn and work. Empower us with your goodness, that we may know the joy of building a community that nurtures well-being in every sense of that word. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And thank you, Pastor Dickens. Please give my regards to your beautiful wife and daughters and Pastor Harper. Please tell them I said hello. Thank you for leading us in vacation this evening. We do have announcements and presentations. I will go over the protocol for the meeting and then we will go on to our presentations. I would like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on next Monday at six P.M. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the items, agenda item comments from Citizens and Delegate section for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol items I'd like to go over so that we'll all be on the same page. I know, we're getting some feedback. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts. It's important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any, on any individual or group of individuals. You'll receive a warning from the chair and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result and discontinuing to speak will turn your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers or speak from the audience, carry on conversations, or be disruptive. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings on zoning matters. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we'll ask that you would please put those in silent mode or if you would turn those off so they will not be disruptive during the meeting. Now, this is how the agenda will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person representing the agenda item or an applicant will make his or her presentation and that will be the only opportunity for, to present the information to us. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our decision on next Monday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience and there will be twenty minutes in totality. Twenty minutes for those that are in favor of the item, twenty minutes for those in opposition. And each person has five minutes unless you have a lot of people and you want to split up the time for two or three minutes a person. But each side has twenty minutes. Prior to coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a card that gives your name and address. The cards are outside on the table and you should have picked one of those cards up, put your name and address, whether you're in favor or against the item, and then you can give that card to my city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, to my right with the white, beautiful white blouse on. Each person only has one opportunity to speak. No reappearance. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to receive the information, deliberate, and be able to make our decision on Monday. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please send that to the city clerk as well. She will make copies and distribute to us. And I think that is it. Oh, please make all of your comments to the chair when you come forward to make any concerns. So our first presentation is a presentation by myself of a proclamation and recognition of April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two as a fifteenth anniversary of being incorporated to the Douglas Carroll Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And we'll ask Dr. Elaine Thurman, the chapter president, to come forward and I will read the proclamation and the letter of congratulations and then we'll take pictures. But you can come forward and after I read the letter, if you'd like to make any comments, that will be perfect. So you can go to the microphone, doctor, and I'll read the letter. Office of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, proclamation. In recognition of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's fifteen years of service in Douglasville, whereas the fifteenth anniversary of Douglas Carroll Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is on April twenty-seventh and whereas the Deltas have been an exemplary pillar of service to the Douglas County and Douglasville communities these past fifteen years. And whereas that service has included providing school supplies to Douglas County schools and the Boys and Girls Club, organizing a blood drive with the American Red Cross, partnering with Cobb and Douglas Public Health to organize an onsite HIV testing and education event for the community, providing gift cards for youth in Douglas County Boys and Girls Club and Operation Christmas amongst many other things. And whereas that service has included providing civic education to the community through voter education and registration drives, educating the community on the duties of elected officials, hosting candidate forums, highlighting candidates seeking office in Douglas County and hosting a Trailblazers in Law, Social Action, and Civic Engagement Forum, along with many other civic-minded service projects. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and citizens of the city, do hereby recognize the Douglas Carroll Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on their fifteenth anniversary and wish them a continued success in their endeavors in our city. So proclaimed this fourteenth day of April, twenty-twenty-two. Let's give them a hand, please. And Dr. Thurman, I'll read the letter of congratulations and then if you'd like to make some comments, you may. And then all of your sorority sisters can come forward in their beautiful red and take a picture with us as well. Office of the Mayor, dear distinguished members of Douglas Carroll Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I am delighted to write this letter congratulating you on fifteen years of being a positive and committed group of women serving in our community. Since being chartered here in April of twenty-two thousand and seven, the chapter has fostered positive relationships within hosting book clubs, promoting financial literacy, ensuring a foundation of public service, and cultivating the quality of life for the citizens of Douglasville. The service of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has shown that by supporting the Cultural Arts Center and Douglas County Connections, delivering teddy bears to sick children within the local hospital, creating Thanksgiving baskets for those in need, partnering with charities such as Breast Cancer Awareness, AIDS Awareness, and the NAACP for voter registration, your organization has a true commitment to service. The City of Douglasville is truly honored to recognize Douglas Carroll Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated for not only fifteen years in the community, but to many, many more years of positive camaraderie and service. Yours sincerely, your divine nine sister, Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville. Excuse me, let's give them a hand as well. That's a lot of reading. So Dr. Thurman, would you like to make any comments on behalf of your chapter?
Yes, just want to say thank you to the City of Douglasville. We are honored and it is a pleasure to service this great county. But we're gonna be celebrating it a little bit earlier on the twenty-second of April. So just want to make certain that that's the date that is listed and we are ready for that photo op.
Yes, ma'am. Well, you see, I have on Mrs. Beasley, I have on Brett, where is she? I have on red today. This is really intensified pink, but I'm saying this word honestly. No, but we would love to come around and take a photo with you and if you don't mind, there are two Deltas that are senior staff members. Could they take the picture as well?
Of course.
Ms. Chelsea and Ms. Shayla, come on. Where's Ms. Shayla? Is she here? Our community? Oh, oh, she sat over there with her sisters. Excuse me? Okay, well, we'll come forward and take a photo.
Thank you.
It's gonna be difficult to see all of us. Now, you know, the problem is, other than Estes, he's not in the right color. I'm not, I can't identify as a female, so... I don't fit in with that rhythm.
Howard, just go out front and take a knee.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just lie across the ground.
Don't come back here, whatever you do. You could sit up there.
I go to the car, get you helmet, put your hand on the helmet.
Kind of like our own little up on the shelf.
Oh, wrong, wrong.
Can I just bend down just a little?
They can see me. Or the front, depending upon how short you are. Howard? That's true.
As the Deltas are departing, it's like a airline, Deltas. The same color and everything. We are getting ready to prepare for our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson, to do a presentation of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two City of Douglasville Douglasville Volunteers. So we are, they're going to receive awards. We're excited about this.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. So as you all may or may not know, April is National Volunteer Month. It's a month dedicated to recognizing the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions volunteers make by generously donating their time and talents to worthy causes. Also, April seventeenth through the twenty-third is National Volunteer Week, twenty-twenty-two, with the theme this year being "Volunteering is Empathy in Action." Today, we celebrate our volunteers that serve on various city boards, authorities, and committees. These individuals had dedicated time and expertise to serve the city and this evening, we want to take the time to thank them. Each staff liaison will introduce their board and its members. And when each member of the board hears their name being called, please walk to the front where our city manager, Marsha Hampton, will hand out a certificate of appreciation as well as a Douglasville volunteer pen displaying the words "Give, Serve, and Love." The city thanks you for giving your time to the city, serving the community, which shows that you love the Douglasville community in all you do. Immediately following this presentation, dinner will be held in the ballroom for mayor and council, volunteers, and their guests. Photos will also be taken at the ballroom during that time. The first board recognized today is a joint board with the city and the county. The city appoints many individuals to serve on boards with the county and carry out official duty in that order. The Douglas County Animal Control Advisory Board recognizes the following individuals who serve on the board. individuals who serve on the board: Tamara Manny and Ms. Julie Hudson. Another joint board is the Douglas County Board of Health and Community Service Board. The city would like to thank Ms. Antoinette Wright for your service on that board. The Douglas County Library Board would like to thank Ms. Ursula Fauch for serving on that board as well. And Ms. Fauch was unable to be with us today. The Douglas County and Douglasville Water and Sewer Authority would like to thank the following individuals, Carrie Richten and Richard Segal for serving on the board. The next board being recognized is the City of Douglasville's Ethics Board. The Ethics Board receives complaints of officials, review and processes complaints, and the purpose is to encourage high ethical standards in official conduct by city officials. The board members are as follows: Dr. Francisco Artley, Allison Frutos, and Ebony Phillips. The Douglasville Downtown Development Authority, the authority seeks to revitalize and redevelop the downtown business district. It fulfills this mission by developing and promoting the public good, general welfare, trade, commerce industry, and employment opportunities within the downtown district. In 2021, they were able to grant over $10,000 to downtown businesses through the Facade Grant Program. By June of this year, the DDA will have granted $30,000 to downtown businesses in just six months, and is bringing back some of the most popular events. The board members are as follows: Ms. Elena Hudson, Ms. Collette Jackson, Mr. David A. Wiltson, Ms. Carol Burden, Mr. Scott Camp, Mr. Craig Bell, and Councilwoman Nicole Miller. Thank you for your service. The Douglasville Public Art Commission is the newest board at the city dedicated to celebrating the people and spirit of Douglasville. It promotes economic vitality throughout the city, integrating artwork with public spaces. It seeks to enhance the visual environment of public spaces for residents and visitors through a commitment of public art. The commission members are as follows: Emily Lightner, Councilman Howard Estes, Denise Overfield, Monique Carruthers, Shirley Bayless, Dennis Connolly, and Craig Bell. Thank you for your service. The City of Douglasville Development Authority, it was enacted in 1973 to attract and encourage the location of quality industry within the boundaries of the city, in hopes the community would benefit from the jobs created and property value enhancement. The current authority members have assisted with attracting the following companies such as Microsoft, Bank Energy, and Switch Data Center. The authority members are as follows: Jeff Camp, Kathy Smith-Curry, Leslie Chu, Scott Powers, Philip Sisk, Donald Watts, and John Williams. Thank you for your time. Now I'd like to call on Mr. Stanley Mirantes, as he will deliver the next group of volunteers. Thank you.
We've got big guns.
Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I have the pleasure, fix the mic here. Could you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. I have the pleasure to present to you the volunteers of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The primary function of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is to advise the local government and the public on various aspects, on various aspects of transportation related to use of bicycles and pedestrians, use of public roadways, sidewalks, and paths. Since its inception in 1992, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has served as an oversight committee to the mayor, council, and city staff on any and all projects within its jurisdiction. The committee has been involved with major projects that include the Bicycle and Pedestrian Connectivity Plan, the Northside Trail Plan, the Highway 5 Land Use and Transportation Study, and many more. Without further ado, the members are Chairman George Bulani, Vice Chairwoman Wanda Bayless Willis. Congratulations. Again, congratulations. The second group I have the privilege to present to you this evening is the Urban Redevelopment Agency. Their primary function of the, is to administer and implement urban redevelopment activities within the opportunity zone. Since its inception in 2010, the Urban Redevelopment Agency has served as an oversight committee to the mayor, council, and city staff on any and all projects within its jurisdiction. They have been involved with major projects that include the Dallas Highway LCI, the Highway 92 Relocation Project, and the cleanup of the old mill site, and many more. As the 10-year period for the Opportunity Zone incentive expires on December 31st of 2021, it marked a decade of thousands of dollars in tax credits that have gone back to employers in and around the New Horizon neighborhoods, and the Fairburn Road, Highway 92 corridor as well. With the closure of this incentive, the mayor and council decided to keep the Urban Redevelopment Agency in act, which is a testament to its quality insight and advocacy for the Douglasville community. The members are Carl Burton, David Wilson, Jeff Camp, Philip Sinks, Councilman Samuel Davis, and last but not least, Chair Judge Barbara Caldwell. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Peyton Powers, and I'm the Tourism Program Coordinator at the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau. Our address is 12385 Veterans Memorial Highway, Douglasville, Georgia. The CBB has an advisory board made up of representatives from various segments of the community. The purpose of the advisory board is to offer guidance and counsel to the tourism program manager within the organizational structure of the city, and for the tourism program manager to share information regarding CBB activities and events with the members of the board. The board meets quarterly and have had two productive meetings this year, one consisting of a strategic planning session to help direct our upcoming efforts. Tonight, I would like to recognize our board, which is comprised of the following members: Amy Dobbins, Chris Bass, Emily Lightner, Karen Howard, Kim Ramos, Colby Davis, Michael Carey, Patty Wink, Rupa Hyra, Samantha Rosato, and Tawana Ernest. Thank you.
Ms. Karen, you didn't bring any wings from the vine. You didn't bring any wings? No.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jennifer. Good evening. Jennifer Johnson, Conference Center and Tourism Director. I'm here tonight to talk about the Convention and Conference Center Authority Board. We don't meet quite as often as the other boards, but we do go over different things that go with the Conference Center, operations, finances, things like that, and right now, we've been working on the amphitheater also. So I want to recognize my board tonight, and I'll read the list. Willa Crook, Dean Wang, Patty Wink, Wilbur Purvis, Tamika Milton Brown, Rayann Elvis, and Daryl Farrar. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shayla Reed, 6701 Church Street. I'm the Director for Community Development. We have two great boards, and first, I would like to give recognition to our Historic Preservation Commission Board. The Historic Preservation Commission is responsible for monitoring all of our historic preservation ordinances and ensuring that when certain amendments or structural changes are made, they are ensuring that they are followed. So with that, I am honored to introduce to you and give appreciation to this very compassionate commission. First, our Chairman, Mr. Dennis Connolly, Pat Smith, our Vice Chair, Elaine Penley Sears, John Dean, and Phil Ren.
Thank you all. Next, I have the pleasure of introducing our Planning Commission. As you all know, our Planning Commission has the responsibility of reviewing items before it makes it to your hands. This group takes the opportunity to ensure that rezonings, special land use permits, anything relative to map amendments or text amendments are reviewed with a second eye for your approval. With that, I am honored to introduce our commission. Francisco, sorry, Francisco Artley is our chairman, Keith Burnett is our Vice Chair, Nathan Zachary, Mark Van, Natalie Feigl, Ralph Benton, and Joy Bates. Thank you all for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Chan Weeks, Executive Director of Keep Douglasville Beautiful, and 8485 Courthouse Square West, Douglasville, Georgia. I have the honor of presenting two boards tonight, the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board and the Tree Board. We'll begin with the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board. The Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board is a nonprofit grassroots leadership organization dedicated to educating our community about litter abatement, waste reduction, and beautification to help preserve the health and promote the social and economic prosperity of our city. As an award-winning affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Georgia Beautiful, Keep Douglasville Beautiful reaches all sectors of our city and provides events and programs that support a vision of a cleaner, greener, and more beautiful community, including in these events are the Church Street Farmers Market, which is starting here in just a few weeks, May 3rd, our Mill Village Community Garden, biannual electronics and scrap metal recycling events, and numerous volunteer-based litter and beautification initiatives. And the board members are Tamara Manny, Julie Hudson, Sharon Hill Robinson, Mike Crasario, Monica Mosley, Sarah Petroselli, and Dawn Kraus. And for our Tree Board, the Tree Advisory Board was created in 2018 for the purpose of establishing and giving direction to the tree management aspects of the citywide beautification plan and programs of the city for the city-owned properties. The board consists of five members who are certified arborists or tree enthusiasts. In the short time since the Tree Board has been in existence, they have seen that the city has become a Tree City USA, hold annual tree planting events, and increased the tree canopy in Douglasville, and most recently has been part of an effort to reintroduce a native tree back into Douglasville's landscape, the American chestnut tree. Board members include Kevin Livingston, Craig McManus, Randy Cooper, Matt DeCharme, and Scott Daniel. Thank you.
Thank you. Award-winning Craig McManus. Hey Craig, I said you're award-winning. Hey, Craig. Got the state award.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Chris Bass, 8830 Gurley Road, Parks Recreation Director. I have the honor of presenting the Recreation Advisory Board. This board was reestablished in 2018 in conjunction with our accreditation process, and since then, they've been able to champion the renovations at Mill Village Park, Willing Workers, and Jesse Davis Park. These members are Charles Jones, Francisco Artley, Kelly Bethay, Toby Foster, Fay Dobbs, Daven Obel, Barry Gamble, Eric Collins, Steve Hoard, Chad Griffin, and Sherman Hampton. At this time, that concludes our awards presentation for our volunteers. We ask that all of our volunteers meet us in the ballroom for our dinner and their guests.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bass. I would ask the council if we can stand and give our volunteers a standing ovation. Round of applause. If you all, as you're leaving, I'd just like to personally thank you for all of your time and efforts and your concerns about the City of Douglasville being great citizens. Thank you all so much. We could not do it without you. And be ready for your close-up, Mr. DeMille, when we do the calendars for next year. I just told my assistant today that we're going to do boards, so every month, we'll have a different board focused, and so you'll be having pictures taken on calendars for the city. God bless you all. Thank you. It's good to see you. Thank you, Mr. Connolly. All right. Mr. Marcus, are you ready? Yes, ma'am. So we will move a little bit from our schedule because we went over in our committee meeting, so we'll have the CEO of the chamber come forward, and as well as the CEO of the Cultural Arts Council. So we'll have Ms. Sarah come up first, Sarah Rae.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Rae, Douglas County Chamber, 6658 Church Street, Douglasville. Just want to take a couple minutes of your time. Thank you guys for your support for the chamber and all of the initiatives that we do to drive business forward in our community. We've had a great year. I provided you guys with some very detailed information and on some of the progress and the new initiatives that we've been doing, as well as the support and services that we provide to support the City of Douglasville through the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So excited to announce that we are in the process of starting into our new three-year strategic plan, which has a large focus on leadership development, economic and workforce development, member engagement, or business engagement, and policy and advocacy. So we're proud to support the city in being that voice of business for the community and supporting initiatives such as the Redevelopment Powers Law back in 2018, and other, and things, other things of that nature. So we have some exciting initiatives that we're rolling out this year. Some have already come into fruition. We're doing a lot of things in the equity and inclusion space, as well as some more specific programming for our small businesses, doing some round tables, things of that nature, and proudly supporting our businesses through our This is Douglas initiative, which is kind of our new bi-local campaign where we celebrate the people and places and businesses that make Douglasville and Douglas County a great place to be. So I don't want to belabor all of the other progress and the things that you guys have tonight, so I'm happy to take any questions about the information that I provided to you guys at this time.
Thank you so much, Sarah. You did provide information for us. We have it loaded on our tablets, and we just appreciate everything that you do for us at the chamber. You are phenomenal, and you are doing an excellent, excellent job. You never stopped during the pandemic. I mean, you continue to give as well to the small businesses. Do we have any comments from council? Thank you. If not, we'll hear from CAC. Thank you, Sarah. Ms. Emily?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing us to come speak with you today. I will be brief, as we know we're on a tight agenda, but I'll try to be thorough as well as the CAC is looking to have additional funding this year. So just a couple of points that I want to highlight on. You should be able to have everything on your tablets pulled up with our PowerPoint and information. So just a couple of things about how the arts make an impact and arts driving tourism. And looking at the total economic impact for the creative industries for the state of Georgia was $62.5 billion. And the creative industries represent 5% of all employment and 4% of all businesses' revenue in the state. Arts unifies community. And studies show students who participate in the arts are three times more likely to graduate with a college degree, three times more likely to be recognized for perfect school attendance, and four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement. Creativity is among the top five skills sought by business leaders. And arts improve healthcare. This is very important for the time during the pandemic. And this was something that was very important to the CAC, keeping the arts in the homes. Working with Visit Douglasville, doing the Fence Gallery at the Plaza at Under Park. We gave out free craft bags throughout the community to keep arts in the home. We shifted everything virtually. So we still continued our programs, but we just took that shift that we had to take. And showing that arts improve the healthcare, 78% of healthcare institutions deliver arts programs because of their healing benefits to patients, i.e. shorter hospital stays, better pain management, and less medication. OSCO individuals can benefit from art on both physiologically and psychologically levels with art as a form of expression and release. And instances of depression and stress are significantly reduced. And this is very important in this time as well. And exposure to the arts makes people more often open to other people's viewpoints. Interactions and social bonds make it through. That art can help increase the community's social capital. Art has a long-term effect of helping boost our brain function, boost mental and emotional health. Art helps process trauma, express difficult feelings, and work through experiences. And we are showcasing all that in our Public Art Initiative that we are trying to push out through the community more. We have a lot of accomplishments in 2021, and we are so grateful for your many years of support, whether it be in kind or through donations, sponsorships. And we have been able to build up our cash reserves. And we've presented nine outstanding exhibits. We expanded our Art on Loan program, which is also featured at City Hall that we change out every quarter. And we recruited 15 new art instructors, adapted safe and sold-out spring break arts camp, summer arts camp. We started an Art Opportunity Scholarship helping bridge the gap between opportunity and the arts. And we present those to Title I schools. We adapted and presented a safe, sold-out Mad Hatter Tea Party, presented a sold-out chili cook-off, which exceeded net goals, and adapted and presented The Taste of Douglasville, which exceeded goals in 2021. And we're excited about what 2022 has to offer just right around the corner. We have brought in new satellites, brought in new pop-up art shops with over $3,000 in sales promoting our local artists and helping it be an incubator for artists and teaching them how to take that first step out to becoming an artist. We brought in over $197,000 in grants and support, not including city support. And the membership drive surpassed our FY21 goals by $1,500. We raised over $73,000 in fundraisers. And of course, I also added a comparative analysis as 2021 was a difficult year. We weren't able to have fundraisers. We weren't able to have our regular programming. We were able to shift a lot virtually. So you can see a difference between our 2021 and then us coming out of that in the 2020, FY21, with the grants that we were able to receive. We have a lot of goals for 2022. And you can take a look at all of those. But we can't do it by ourselves. It takes a community. It takes a village. We have a great board member, Board of Directors. We have many community partners. And we are in this wonderful position of growing by leaps and bounds right now. We have already met our fiscal year goal, which is July to June. And we are already at 150% of it. And we haven't even finished our fiscal year yet. So we are growing by leaps and bounds. With that, we need to add a new staff employee. And we are presenting a new multicultural festival, the first one in the community. We're going to build up our cash reserves more. We're going to expand our Art on Loan. We're going to create a new maintenance and facility plan and create a new five-year strategic plan, complete more renovations, reach higher goals, have a more diversified revenue to be reflected, and create new marketing plans and so much more that I could go on and on. And I'm happy to ask and answer questions. We'll also continue to offer everything that we already do to our community through our diverse and inclusive exhibits and performances and programs. And we cannot do it without the support of our partners. And on that one slideshow, I ran out of room for adding all of our support, all of our partners. We had many here tonight come out, support the CAC to showcase how much they love the arts, how much it means to our community, and how much we need it. So I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your continued support with our programs and our new initiatives as well, and always be open to what we have coming up. And as you already know, the arts can bring together people across boundaries. It can drive the economy. It can unify a community. By working together, we can bring those impossible dreams to life. With that, thank you, Mayor Robinson, and City Council members for letting me come speak with you today. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lightner. We appreciate the presentation. We do have some information on our iPads. And we really enjoy the Art on Loan that's at City Hall and all the public art at the parks when we're walking around into the community as well. So the painted fire hydrants and just all the public art we see. And we want to continue to expand in that vein. And as well as having our Art Commission is really going to help us in the city to offer that to the community. So I think with that being said, the city manager and I have spoken, and we'll talk to finance and the city council and make a recommendation for us supporting you and the Chamber, the CAC and the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on then to announcements, our staff report. It says Marcus here. Mr. Thompson. Hey there, Mr. Thompson. If you'll come forward. We do have a staff report on Creekwood Drive, the speed and safety study. And Mr. Thompson will talk to us about that.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Marcus Thompson, 6701 Church Street, City Engineer. I'll try to be brief. Good news, we got the-
We can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me?
Put the microphone towards you. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. So good news. We got the transportation study back from Luminate for the Creekwood Drive Road. Luminate based the following speed and safety analysis on evaluating the operating speeds, crash history, and street characteristics for Creekwood Drive to determine if a speed limit deduction is required. The study indicated no speeding problems in a reported relatively low vehicular crash number. However, there are some sight distance issues at majority of the intersections along Creekwood Drive. In summary, the report indicates that the vehicular traffic could safely navigate the roadway at 25 miles per hour. And also listed a few recommendations from Luminate. The recommendation number one is to, is basically based on the posted 30 miles per hour speed limit should be reduced at 25 miles per hour. Secondly, a speed limit sign should be posted on the west end of the corridor for drivers entering the Parkway Circle. And lastly, a speed hump should be considered for installation approximately 250 feet west of Lakeview Court. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson. I know, Mayor Proton, this is your ward. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for putting this together. I can say that the residents of Creekwood Drive and the Creekwood neighborhood are going to be very pleased to know that we now can lower the speed limit a little bit. And I think even if it makes a small difference, I think it's pretty important to a lot of folks to see that. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Councilman Davis.
Marcus, we're going to get off the record just a little. The meeting that we had at Willing Working Park about the speed breakers and the stop sign, have you got any update on that yet?
Yes, sir. So we're currently sticking to the purchasing policy. So we're sourcing three different vendors to provide the installation of the speed humps for us. I think we currently have two thus far. So we waiting on our third vendor. Once we receive that, we will proceed.
So you think there being, before we have the ribbon cutting?
City manager said no.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Marcus.
No problem.
We're talking.
Okay. So we have to be competitive and have three applicants. All right. So B is the staff report on a development plan approved for the Silverman Phase 5 development for 95 acres on Bright Star Connector and landlots 158, 159, 160, 161, and 162. District 2, Section 3, Parcel 0031 for plans dated March 2nd, 2022, application by SL Douglas Place LLC, Mr. Thompson. I know I'm reading your whole thing. Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
That's fine. All right. So the applicant, SL Douglas Place LLC, previously submitted a development plan, application, or proposal package, or package that depicts an office and allowable use in the office distribution zoning district and a distribution center slash warehouse of permissible use in a light industrial zoning district. There are four flats buildings along the frontage of Bright Star Connector totaling 168, approximately 168,000 square feet on 18 acres of the overall site area. In addition, the site plan indicates a 1 point, approximately 1.2 million square foot warehouse building on 81 acres of the overall site area. There are 182 parking spaces and 113 truck and truck parking spaces for the office distribution property. The site plan also shows 378 car parking spaces, 293 truck parking spaces, and 296 truck loading spaces for the light industrial property. The building elevation plan shows the facade materials consisting primarily of concrete and glass with metal accents. I have attached the application, site plan, and building elevations. City staff, we reviewed all the documents. And we want to recommend approval for this development based on the following conditions, that an NFPA sprinkler system is to be required for any structure over 5,000 square feet and in addition to an alternative parking plan to accommodate the requirement of 420 office parking spaces and 1,000 distribution center slash warehouse parking spaces. And this is basically for transparency. We spoke with the applicant. And we're currently in, you know, talks, working on the alternative parking plan.